Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the reorganization meeting of the Board of Trustees for the School District of Mystery Lake to order at 7:00 PM. My name is Kelly Knott, and I will be calling the meeting and conducting the proceedings until we have our election of our chairperson and vice-chairperson for this coming school year. At this time, I have regrets extended from trustee Sharker, and I welcome to the table our newest member, Michelle McQuillson, and we will be doing a swearing-in shortly as well. I'd like to begin this evening by the Treaty V acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are signatories of Treaty V and that we reside in the traditional territories of the Nishisabueyase Kreen Nation. The School District of Mystery Lake is located in the community of Thompson in the province of Manitoba. Manitoba is located on the traditional and ancestral lands of the Nehitu-Ininu, Ganesu Lin, Meti-Inuit, Anasinenu, Anashinabi, and Dakota-Oyet Nations. The School District of Mystery Lake remains committed to honoring treaties in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. We are all treaty people. At this time, I ask for a mover for the approval of the agenda. Trustee Humby. Second, trustee Tomaszewski. The motion that the agenda be approved is circulated. Any concerns, questions, additions? Call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you.
What is that saying here?
I'm not certain, but it's...
The volume on that phone?
I think it's the phone.
We're getting feedback?
Okay, so we're gonna start the rest of the evening with our Oath of Office and the signing of affidavit of qualifications for Michelle. Oh, I'm sorry, for trustee McQuillson. I'll ask you to read out the document, please, into the record. I'm an Aminahrta Solution MAPS solely affirm, one, that I was elected a school trustee at the School District of Mystery Lake on the 10th day of September AD 2024, that I am an actual resident elector with the said school district, that my place of residence is 31 Saga Crescent, Thompson, Manitoba, that I am a Canadian citizen as defining the local authorities' election act, that I am of the full age of 18 years, that I am not otherwise disqualified under the Public Schools Act, that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability and knowledge, perform and fulfill the duties of the office of school trustee at the School District of Mystery Lake, to which I have been elected, and so long as I shall continue to hold office, to hold that office without fear or favor, and that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, his heirs and successors according to law. Thank you. I'm Lisa.
Welcome.
Welcome. No take backs, you're stuck now.
The next item we have is the election of chairperson. At this time, I call for the first call of nominations. Trustee Warner Brown, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Second call for nomination of chairperson for the 24-25 school year. Is there a second nomination? Hearing none, I'll continue to the third call for nominations. Is there a third call for nomination of chairperson for the 24-25 school year?
I nominate trustee Tomaszewski.
Trustee Tomaszewski, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Second call for nominations for the vice-chairperson for the 24-25 school year. Hearing none, I move to the third call of nominations for the vice-chairperson for the School District 24-25 school year. Having no further nominations, trustee Tomaszewski, you are appointed as vice-chairperson for the 24-25 school year. I'll now turn the deal over to chairperson Warner Brown.
Don't forget that.
There you go.
Do it for the glory, because I don't do it for the pay.
It's for the gavel. It's for the gavel. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Treasurer. Thank you for finessing the first few minutes of our business. Before we start, I'd like to acknowledge that the School District has the flags for the School Board at half-mast today in front of the School District Building. The reasons for that is we'd like to remember the loss of a student from Artie Parker. And before I start, I'd like us to take a moment of silence to remember the contributions in the life of Breece Ross. So if we could take one minute of silence, I'd like to do so now. Okay, thank you for that. We will remember the loss of the student. Secondly, those of you who have been following the news will know that at Lion and State in the legislature in Winnipeg, we have the former Grand Chief Cathy Merrick, and she, of course, led with great flair and great leadership, the Assembly of Chiefs of Manitoba. So we'd like to also remember her contributions to the work of reconciliation in the problems of Manitoba. I have before us the adoption of the minutes, 9.1. We have the minutes for June 11th. We have also the minutes of July 4th and the minutes for July 13th. Can I have someone move that we accept the adoption of those minutes for tonight?
August 13th.
August 13th. What did I say?
June, July.
July 13th? June 11th, July 4th, and August 13th. Sorry about that.
They're all separate motions.
They're all separate motions? Okay, can I have someone move that we accept the minutes for June 11th? Trustee Humby, seconded by trustee Young. Any discussion? All those in favor? Carry. We have before us the minutes from the emergency meeting in July 4th. Can I have someone move that we accept the minutes for July 4th meeting? Vice Chair, seconded by trustee Young. All those in favor? Carry. We have before us the emergency minutes of August 13th. Can I have someone move that we accept those minutes? Trustee Humby, seconded by Vice Chair. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Thank you. 10.1. We have a delegation with us tonight, Manitoba Games. Principal Harwood and Christy Andres, leaders of the Host Society Executive, will discuss the requirements of the non-voting School District Representative for the 2026 Manitoba Games Executive.
So the trustees will see that we have a course on that, from the Manitoba Games Executive Society. Circulate through.
Thanks for having us. I think I recognize most faces. I was here with some delegates from the city of Thompson. We were proposing that we team up with you and host the games. Things have progressed a little bit. This is Christy Andres. Christy is now co-chairing with me, so Christy and I will be kind of leading the Host Society in the running of the games. I know you guys have lots to do tonight. I guess the biggest thing, I just, these are kind of my talking points, and I thought I might as well just kind of give them to you, so if you're a visual learner. The biggest piece is that we're looking for someone to represent the School District on our Host Society as a non-voting member. In the past, that's been a trustee. I guess it doesn't necessarily have to be, but that's, I guess, for you guys to decide. In terms of a time commitment, our Host Society is going to be meeting once a month for the next year, for sure, and then as the games get closer, we might be meeting kind of semi-monthly and then even, maybe even weekly, as the games get kind of closer. So that's kind of the time commitment we're looking for. I know it's a, this is a short notice, but really our first meeting as an executive. Sorry, let me take a step back. We have, Christy and I are obviously co-chairing. We have seven other people that are serving on our, we're fighting over whether we're an executive or a board. We're trying to figure that out, but kind of that level on our organizational chart, we have those people in place, too. So, yeah, we're meeting for the first time as that group on Wednesday, so next week, the 18th, at 7:00 PM at the TRCC. So if somebody from this group could be there, that would be fantastic. I understand it's short notice, and if we can't, then we'll obviously invite you to the next meeting, kind of thing. I think from a School District perspective, one of the things that we're going to need to decide fairly shortly is which of the schools we'd be using as an athletes' village. So since we've talked, things have changed in our community. Things have changed a lot for you guys. When we hosted Manitoba, I think I talked about this when I was here last time. Last time we hosted, we used Westwood School and Burnwood School as the two athletes' villages. We used Riverside School as well for athletes, and we have kind of a different plan for ath-, or, sorry, for officials, sorry, official village at Riverside. If I were only wearing my Manitoba Games hat, I think the ask would be to use Burnwood and Juniper School, but knowing what I know, I know that there's a lot of stuff, turmoil, I shouldn't call it turmoil, a lot of changes happening at Juniper and Burnwood, so I'm sensitive to the fact that maybe those aren't ideal locations. I ask for those two because they're the biggest schools, and they give us some flexibility. I guess I'll give a small example, something I'm hoping, I think that we're going to try and get out in front of. I was, the Manitoba Summer Games were hosted in Dauphin, middle of August, and I did what we call a transfer of knowledge, so I went down there and kind of was learning, and they were sharing, oh, here's the mistakes that we made, you know, learn from, kind of thing. So one of the ones that they shared was, when you're building, when you're putting together an athletes' village, you get your classrooms, there's public health standards on how many cots you can put in a room and this sort of thing. Well, when they were assigning, the pieces of that puzzle fit that the, and I'm making up the sports, the boys' mountain biking team was in the same room as the boys' triathlon team, I don't know. But what they didn't think about was, one group was a group of 10-year-old boys, and one group was a group of 16- and 17-year-old boys. And so the conversations between those demographics of students is a little bit different, and so there was a little bit more colorful language being used by some of the older kids. And so they had to, they recognized it super quick, had to make a swerve, okay, we got to find another room, because we can't have these two groups of kids in the same spot. So having, if we were to use Burnwood and Juniper, we would have a bit more flex that way, but again, I know what's going on there. Right now, I've, I just got it today, I asked Mr. Wamboldt at Riverside School to go through and get some dimensions of schools. So we now have the dimensions for Riverside and Deerwood, and we've measured all of those classrooms, and so now we're taking it on Wednesday, we're going to give it to our people that, our executive group that's responsible for athletes' villages, we call it Care and Comfort, and they're going to start seeing if, what that would look like if we start dropping, I mean, the number in each school is probably about 350 cots, if not, like, because we're talking 700 athletes per phase, divide that in half, boys and girls, roughly, so those are some of the numbers that we're working with. But, yeah, if Deerwood and Riverside work, I think it makes a lot of sense, but, yeah, I think we'll be having to have those discussions, if that makes sense, and that's just some of the stuff that's going on in our brain right now. I've been talking the whole time.
That's good, keep going.
Okay. I'm kind of the mokey face of this group. Sorry. Once those decisions get made, like, kind of, that's obviously a bigger one, which two schools we're going to use that way, we can start thinking about capital projects, so obviously we're bringing some capital dollars to the table. So I think once we have those villages figured out, we can talk about what upgrades are needed that kind of benefit the games and benefit the school division, but that's why the decision of which school has to be done fairly quickly, because we'd like to get down that road. We will need, for the games to be successful, we will need Artie Parker, so that will be one of the venues, and I think that's one of the areas, maybe, if you want to have conversations with your staff at Artie Parker, like, what are some areas that you think could use some upgrades? And I don't know what those are, but I'm spitballing. Like, we're going to have, likely, the cafeteria is going to be used, maybe there's some upgrades to the cafeteria that we can make, you know? Is there something in the gym that we need to do? Is there something in the forum? Do you want to do something in the forum? Because that might be an area we have some athlete entertainment. You know what I mean? So those are things that, like, we can start talking about what benefits the games, but also benefits the school division and the school long-term, so we can maybe start having some of those conversations. I hope you know that when you signed on to this, you signed on to commit some dollars to this. So as a total, between the city of Thompson and the School District of Mystery Lake, the expectation through our multi-party agreement is that we're going to commit $100,000. When I say "we," I mean you, partnered with the city.
Very generous of you.
So, as an example of, one of the examples of that last time was at Artie Parker, this isn't the most, we used to call them gang showers, I don't know if that's the right term, but all the boys would shower in an open area, so one of the upgrades that we made through School District dollars was to stall those, and now there's individual stalls into the boys' bathroom, so that was money that the School District spent to benefit the games, that was part of that commitment. So, on the spot, I haven't, I don't know the exact dollar, Kelly might know, $30,000, maybe? The School District committed for capital projects in 2018, and the city was like 70, I think, maybe? That sound about right? So when we get to that executive level, we can start hashing out what that number looks like, but again, in the multi-party agreement, it talks about the municipal partners, and so that's essentially, for these games, the municipal partners are city of Thompson and School District of Mystery Lake, if that makes sense.
The only thing we didn't add on here is maybe date. Do we need to?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. The games, we have requested that the games are going to be hosted the first week of March. I believe I've communicated that, might have been in the letter? Did I put that in the letter?
I was just going to ask you. Okay.
Yeah, it definitely, sorry, that's kind of big, so first week of March, and I had those dates written down.
Did you say that's tentatively?
Nope, that's, that's a go.
That's hard?
Yeah, so the request can go to the minister that, about moving spring break to that week. And I have that date written down, I'm really sorry. First week of March, 100%. I want to say 3rd to the 10th, but that might be the 2018 dates. I don't have that calendar on me, so I'll get that to you folks right away. I have it.
Second to the 6th.
Oh, more than that. Because it starts on the weekend, too. So, I mean, it's, that, that, sorry, the spring break would be the second to the 6th.
Those are the decisions.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Just curious about why they would utilize the existing spring break for the athletes' traveling.
It's a good question, has always been, and that's not a great answer, and the rationale is, for a lot of the sports, they're wrapping up, so, I mean, hockey is one of the main reasons. The hockey season is done by end of March, okay? So this is kind of the culmination of their hockey season, hockey Manitoba season is that week, that March, first week of March.
Before Manitoba, I was hoping that it would even be late February, so they're okay with it being into March, but, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's dictated by the PSOs, to be honest.
Well, I think in your original presentation, it has to do with the fact that a lot of snow is missing.
And, so, weather, obviously, is a gigantic factor in that, too, but even, yeah, a lot of the winter season sports are done by end of March, kind of thing.
Does your executive team have a member from UCN on there?
At this point, no.
No?
No.
Did you have one? Should you have one?
Probably, sure, I'd thought of, to be honest. Because I do know that we use some of those facilities.
Sometimes, I mean, you know, if there's a presence there at the TRC, it will affect UCN.
Yeah, for sure, and to be honest, we held there, UCN hosted the Poli Clinic, so the medical area was an area at UCN.
Well, think about that as a comparison.
Yeah, no, it's a good, yeah, I'll take that.
Do you want the name of our trustee right now?
I don't need it. If you have it, great, but I wasn't anticipating that. Okay. Oh, okay, wonderful. Well, welcome aboard. Okay?
Yeah.
If there's any other questions, I'll have to answer, but like I said, I know you guys have lots to do.
Did we have any questions, guys? We look pretty good.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming.
We didn't even have a strong arm, she volunteered for it, guys. There you go. Yeah, I thought I'd have to threaten someone or something.
Maybe I should get an email, so we should do it.
Do you have a business card?
We'll talk about your email.
Yep.
Hello, Anderson, Mystery Lake, can we get you?
Yeah, same.
Okay. Yeah, then I can put the request in.
Okay, thank you so much. No, we're excited for this. Yep, it'll be good for Thompson, for sure.
What's that?
Okay, moving on to item 11, this is from previous board meetings, none. Item number 12, Superintendent of Human Resources and Policy Report.
Provided you with a written report. As you can see, there is, from our last board meeting in June, there were still a number of positions that were still vacant, so hiring went into, oh, probably mid-July, but we're staffed, so.
Good job.
Yeah, it was challenging, maybe not as challenging as last year, but hopefully this year we'll have a few more grads coming out of UCN. I think we're only three or four this year, but I think there's a bigger cohort this year.
Do you think that Manitoba's graduating more now than two years ago? Or is there a slack that's starting to be picked up, or is it still pretty slow?
It's still pretty slow. I did a lot of cold calling, like, went on Education Canada and just phoned people, looked at their profile, because there's a component on that, on that program that says candidate search, so you go in there and it has a candidate profile, and it just kind of says, are they willing to relocate? And, like, some are, they don't list Manitoba as a place they'd like to relocate to, but I just called them and said, hey, how are you? And tell them who I am, and tell them what I've got, and I've probably got about six candidates from that process, probably made upwards of, I'd say, 300 to 400 calls, though, lots of calls.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and emails. Sometimes you get ghosted, but sometimes you get a hit, so. I was in attendance at a number of community and district events. I'd like to highlight that we hosted our new teacher orientation, August 28th, and we had, we welcomed 25 new teachers.
That was good.
The district, it was good, yeah, good, and really enthusiastic crew, they were, it was really warm that day and beautiful outside, it was quite hot in there, and they were super attentive, and it was great. I do have a couple of retirements I'd like to mention. Allison Shatford has submitted her letter of retirement effective September 3rd of 2024. Ms. Shatford has worked for the School District of Mystery Lake as an educational assistant. She's started her career at Westwood, and she's retiring from her position as a speech and language educational assistant out of the board office here. Joanna Wood has submitted her letter of retirement effective September 3rd. Ms. Wood started working for the district as an educational assistant in 2021, or 2001, excuse me, and she started her career at Westwood and is retiring from her position as an EA at Artie Parker.
That's a long time.
Yeah, and just on Yeah, so the, the request can go to the minister that, um, about moving spring break to, to that week. And I have that date written down, I'm really sorry. Um, first week of March, hundred percent. I wanna say third to the tenth, but that might be the twenty eight, twenty eighteen dates. I don't have that calendar on me, so I'll get that to, to you folks right away. I have it.
Second to the sixth.
Oh, more than that. Because it starts on the weekend, too. So I mean, it's that, that, sorry, the spring break would be the second to the sixth.
Those are the business days.
Yes, thank you, yeah. Yeah.
Just curious about whether we would utilize the existing spring break for the, for the athletes' traveling.
It's a good question, uh, has always been, and that's not a great answer. And the rationale is, for a lot of the sports, they're wrapping up. So the, the, I mean, hockey is one of the main reasons. The hockey season is done by end of March, okay? So this is kind of the culmination of their hockey season. Hockey Manitoba's season is, is that week, um, that March, first week of March.
Sport Manitoba was hoping that it would even be late February, so they're okay with it being into March, but, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's dictated by the PSOs, to be honest.
Well, I think in your original presentation, it has to do with the fact that a lot of snow is missing.
And, so, weather, obviously, is a gigantic factor in that, too. Um, but even, yeah, yeah. A lot of the winter season sports are done by end of March, kind of thing.
Does your executive team have a, a member from U C N on there?
Uh, at this point, no.
No?
No.
Did you have one? Should you have one?
Probably, sure, hadn't thought of it, to be honest. Because I do know that we use some of those facilities.
Sometimes, I mean, you know, if, if there's a presence there at the T R C, it will affect U C N.
Yeah, for sure, and to be honest, we held their, um, U C N hosted the poly clinic, so the medical area was, was an area at U C N.
Well, think about that as a comparison.
Yeah, no, it's a good, yeah, I'll take that.
Do you want the name of our trustee right now?
I don't need it. If you have it, great, but I wasn't anticipating that. Okay, oh, okay, wonderful. Well, welcome aboard. Okay?
Yeah.
If there's any other questions, I'll have to answer, but like I said, I know you guys have lots to cover tonight, so.
And did we have any questions, guys? We were pretty good.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming.
We didn't even have a strong arm, she volunteered for it, so there you go.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I thought I'd have to threaten someone or something.
Um, maybe I should get emails or we should do.
Do you have a business plan?
We'll talk about your email.
Yep.
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Lake, we can get you.
Yeah, same.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, then I can put the request in.
Okay, thank you so much. Yep, we're excited for this. Yep, it'll be good for, for Thompson, for sure.
What's that?
Oh, all right. Okay, moving on to item eleven. Prizes from previous board meetings, none. Oh, easy. Item number twelve, Superintendent of Human Resources and Policy Report.
Yeah. Provided you with a written report. As you can see, there is, from our last board meeting in June, there were still a number of positions that were still vacant. So the hiring went into, oh, probably mid-July, but we're, we're staffed, so.
Good job.
Yeah, it was, um, challenging, maybe not as challenging as last year, but, um, hopefully, this year, we'll have a few more grads coming out of U C N. I think we're only three or four this year, but I think there's a bigger cohort this year.
Do you think that Manitoba's graduating more now than two years ago? Or is there a slack that's starting to be picked up, or is it still pretty slow?
It's still pretty slow. I did a lot of cold calling, like, went on Education Canada and just phoned people, looked at their profile, because there's a, there's a component on that, um, on that program that says candidate search. So you go in there and it has a candidate profile, and it just kind of says, are they willing to relocate? And like, some are. They don't list Manitoba as a place they'd like to relocate to, but I just called them and say, hey, how are you? And tell them who I am, and tell them what I've got. And I've probably got about six candidates from that process. Probably made upwards of, I'd say, three to four hundred calls, though, lots of calls.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Um, and emails. Sometimes you get ghosted, but sometimes you get a hit, so. Um, I was in attendance at a number of community and district events. I'd like to highlight that we hosted our, uh, new teacher orientation, uh, August twenty eighth, and we had, we welcomed twenty-five new teachers.
That was good.
The district, it was good, yeah, uh, good, and really enthusiastic crew. They were, it was really warm that day and beautiful outside. It was quite hot in there, and they were super attentive, and it was great. I do have a couple of retirements I'd like to mention. Allison Shatford has submitted her letter of retirement effective September third of two, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Shatford has worked for the School District of Mystery Lake as an educational assistant. Uh, she's started her career at Westwood, and she's retiring from her position as a speech and language educational assistant out of the board office here. Um, Joanna Wood has submitted her letter of retirement effective September third. Ms. Wood, uh, started working for the district as an educational assistant in twenty twenty-one, or twenty-oh-one, excuse me. And she started her career at Westwood and is retiring from her position, uh, as an E A at Artie Parker.
That's a long time.
Yeah, and just on behalf of the School District of Mystery Lake, I wanna wish the two of them well in their retirement.
Absolutely. Thank you for your service.
That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the superintendent? Hearing that, no, okay. Uh, item number thirteen, Superintendent of Educational Services and Programming Report.
I submitted my report. I'm just gonna highlight some of, um, what's been going on. I guess, um, for the most part, most of the time has been spent on, um, busing and lunch programs for, um, the students of Westwood School. So, um, we had sent out, um, first of all, we had to find some bus drivers, um, and buses. So we have a contract with, um, student for student. Um, they've been excellent to deal with. Um, we did send out forms for folks to reply if they wanted to be in the bus program, if they needed the lunch program. We had above a, a rate of sixty percent, um, by April nineteenth. So I, um, had a couple of, um, folks who came in and helped me with making some phone calls. And we needed to create some bus routes, which, um, was very challenging, especially with all the construction going on, because we didn't wanna create a bus route and then keep changing it up. Um, and then we went for the bus ride to see, you know, if these were the right spots or the best spots, because we didn't want kids on people's lawns, and we, um, wanted to have some natural spots for kids to go to. And then for the first three days, we had curriculum services riding the bus. So we were, we were on the bus, it was, um, it was interesting. I will say, the bus drivers are very professional and very safety orientated, so that was really good. Um, I've had a few students returned here at the end of the day, because parents do need to pick up their students at the bus pickup point if they're grade, um, three and lower. So we've had a, a few visitors, which has worked out okay, because we've had conversations with parents. Um, our bus is over capacity, because the, um, bus that runs the kindergarten to grade five, the capacity for that is seventy, and we have seventy-two students. So, um, people have been very good. The bus has not had to do two runs yet, because not everybody goes to school every day. There's always been, um, you know, sixty-five kids, sixty-six kids, so we're working through that. The busing to Juniper School, we have eighty-six students. So that's running two pickups, which, um, there's an earlier pickup for grades six and sevens, and then the graduates are the last to go. Um, that one's been, it's been working okay so far. Um, we have had some issues with the public and parking. Um, as you can imagine, people are not used to school buses. Um, at the Westwood kids that are attending Burnwood School, we are now using the actual loop to pull in. And it's actually very, it's much more safe for kids, um, because the fence is right there. And if we're not over capacity, then we can have all the kids on the bus. We don't have to do the two runs, so, um, people have been very patient with that piece. Um, and then we have, uh, Cypress as the Juniper School drop-off, which is on the other side of the school, but, um, you can see the school from that point. We have the signs where they should be assumed, so that people know that these are the designated Westwood drop-off and pickup, so. Um, we have had the R C P come out and help move traffic along. Um, they have not handed out any tickets yet. They've been very good about being proactive and telling folks that, you know, you, you can't pass a bus, it's a six-hundred-and-seventy-two-dollar fine. Um, we've had, uh, we put a request into the city for the C S Os to also help with that, so. So that's been going on. Um, the other thing we needed to, um, develop was a lunch program for our students. So, um, we had to create some procedures, some accepts, acceptance policies for families, so they understand, um, you know, the expectations, and then, um, hiring, job, creating a job description, and then hiring about, I think we have about sixteen lunch monitors right now, because we needed one for every class. So that was, um, that was challenging, but we've managed to hire, um, a number of folks. It's really hard to get people to commit to one hour, but we were very lucky. We had some, um, educational assistants who were willing to, um, spend their lunch hour with students. So that's what we're doing right now. And then we have a two-hour monitor at each school, and they're kind of overlooking the program. So we had a, an E A who retired, who came out of retirement to, to look after the one at Burnwood. And then we have, uh, another gal who stepped up to do the one at Juniper. So that's, that's been a bit of work, just trying to get everything organized. Um, and then, as promised, we did host the caregiver meeting for parents on September third, because they were very, very patient, but they really wanted to know what was happening with busing and lunch. So, um, hosted one at Burnwood School, and then we had one over at Juniper School. So, um, they were well-attended. We had, had a hundred and thirty-nine, um, people at the Burnwood session, and then a hundred and forty-four at the Juniper session.
That's outstanding. That's outstanding.
It was, it was really, and we didn't have any snacks, we didn't have any drinks. I felt kind of bad, but it was kind of just a chance for them to come in, um, see the routes, ask the questions, and then for them to see where their kids were going to school. Because it was really important for them to see that we've created these wings that are Westwood wings. And, you know, they're very, very nice spaces, so. Um, and I continue with the Westwood Inquiry line, um, emails. They've slowed down a lot. I've started getting some high school questions, so I've just redirected those back to the high school. But we'll keep that open for a little while, just because I think it's important for parents, if they have questions, to be able to send an email, and then, and within twenty-four hours, I, I'll get back to them on what their ask is, or, you know, it's usually just things that we can handle quickly. Um, I did meet with Curriculum Services, um, after, and then they were, they were so helpful in getting all this done. But we've also met, um, to look at our year-to-glance and what our prior is gonna be as Curriculum Services. And, um, our M R L C, which is our Manitoba Rural Learning Consortium, um, that'll be starting next week. So we have, um, that's our professional development. We have eleven networks, we have fifty-one participants, sixty registrations, and, um, the professional development over the course of the year are gonna be around trauma-informed resilient schools, continuing on with the numeracy program, the literacy programs. And then, um, there is the Manitoba School Leadership Framework, which is a new document, so we have some administrators signed up for that. And, yeah, I think that's my report for now.
Super.
Uh, just a comment, I've touched base, and I think the transition, for the most part, like, all in all is, yeah, it's, I mean, it's gone as smoothly as it possibly could. I think the kids are starting to settle in, and people are getting used to the idea. It's crowded.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's crowded, for sure. Um, I mean, half gyms and those, but I think, for the most part, I think that's what needed to happen. I think school needed to start, kids needed to get in the building, and then I think a lot of the unknowns were.
The anxiety dissipates.
You can see, right? So, um, at Burnwood School, was, just with students, there's four-hundred-and-seventy-three bodies. Um, that's not including any of our, our staff. So that'll probably bring it to, you know, five-hundred-and-thirty, five-hundred-and-forty folks in that building. And then at Juniper, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven students without staff.
Wow.
I'd actually like to come and see this.
I'd like to see, I was thinking the same thing. I'd love to do a walk.
Yep. But I wanna go when the school's in, like, not after, after school hours?
Yeah, like, you wanna go and see it and, yeah, just get a feel for the capacity within the schools? Like, they're busy, because there's a lot of kids in there. Not a lot of free space to be going somewhere and have a little quiet time.
But there's, there's some spaces that are, are not ideal, but it's the best that we can do, right? So, um, let me know your schedules.
Yeah, I do like, yeah.
Let me know when you're available.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
You guys, too?
They'd like to see you guys.
Yeah, I think so, I think that would be good.
Even at, like, Burnwood, the, you have a lot of programming going on, like, it's not your typical library setting anymore, where we's going in there. Like, there's lots of programming going on in that library during the day.
Absolutely.
In terms of, you know, being with kids.
At least then the details and the staff can see that the trustees know what's going on, and, you know, that we're sympathetic.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, just let me know what date works.
That sounds good. Okay. Okay, super. Are there any questions for the superintendent?
I just have a comment.
Absolutely.
I hope that you're doing a wonderful job, uh, do what you've done so far, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We work with really, really good people.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, uh, even kudos to the administration and staff of both of those receiving schools. Um, yeah, it's not easy, having, you know, it's like, which relative showing up? You know, they're really quiet.
We're coming to live with you for next ten months. I love my environment.
Yeah, it was, uh, they, yeah, it's been great. I mean, it hasn't been without its hiccups, because, I mean, you know, it's crowded. And, but, uh, they, you know, everyone's been really good in terms of sharing resources and just recognizing that their Westwood colleagues are coming with nothing. You know? So.
No, absolutely, no. Thank you.
I think they're, and I, from what I gathered from the Westwood folks, they're just happy to be somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, not in a school, like, a hall basement or a church basement, running classes. They're just happy they've, they've got a home, and they've got a classroom, and it's got some semblance of normalcy.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, wonderful. Uh, item number fourteen, Secretary Treasurer's Report.
Sir, can I have in your pocket just this evening where the summer expenditures for June, July, and August? Uh, for the month of June, accounts payable of two million, seven-hundred-fifty-one thousand, nine-hundred-thirty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents were processed. Teacher payroll of two million, four-hundred-sixty-one thousand, eight-hundred-thirteen dollars, seventy-two cents, and non-teaching payroll of one million, one-hundred-twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred-ninety-seven dollars, twelve cents. Bring forward the recommendation that the expenditures for the month of June, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of six million, three-hundred-forty-two thousand, four-hundred-forty-nine dollars, thirty-one cents be approved.
Can I have someone move that we accept the recommendation for Secretary Treasurer? Vice Chair, seconded by, by Trustee Young? Any, any discussion? All those in favor? Carrie.
The expenditure for the month of July, accounts payable of three million, one-hundred-eighty-three thousand, one-hundred-sixty-three dollars, twenty-five cents. Teacher payroll of one million, nine-hundred-twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred-twenty-eight dollars, forty-seven cents, and support payroll of seven-hundred-sixty-three thousand, five-hundred-sixty dollars, thirty-one cents were processed. My recommendation is that the expenditures for July, two thousand twenty-four, in the total amount of five million, eight-hundred-seventy-five thousand, three-hundred-fifty-two dollars, three cents be approved.
We have the recommendation in front of us from the Secretary Treasurer, the expenditures for July, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of five million, eight-hundred-seventy-five thousand, three-hundred-fifty-two dollars and three cents be approved. Can I have someone so move that we accept this recommendation? Trustee Young, seconded? Trustee Humpy, all those in favor?
Expenditures for the month of August, accounts payable of two million, nine-hundred-seventy-three thousand, one-hundred-twenty-three dollars, thirty-nine cents. Teacher payroll of one million, seven-hundred-twelve dollars, seven-hundred-twelve thousand, two-hundred-twenty-five dollars, four cents, and non-teaching payroll, five-hundred-eighty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-fourteen dollars, ninety-six cents. Bring forward the recommendation that the expenditures for August, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of five million, two-hundred-seventy-five thousand, sixty-three dollars, thirty-nine cents be approved.
We have before us a recommendation from the Secretary Treasurer, the expenditures for August, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of five million, two-hundred-seventy-five thousand, sixty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents be approved. Can I have someone so move that we accept? Uh, Vice Chair, seconded by, uh, Trustee Nicole Saw? All those in favor? Carrie. Was that your first second? Was it your first second? Ooh, it feels good, eh? Yeah? Good, good. You're on the public record.
Um, just a brief update here to the expenditures. Uh, just looking at our September, two thousand twenty-four cash flow at this time. Uh, we have not received any insurance proceeds as of yet. Our expenditures for the insurance, uh, with regards to supplies and technology is in excess of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars at this time. Uh, we are working, uh, completing all the reporting requests for insurance to hopefully get some funds flowing shortly. Uh, at this time, I've sent a request out to the division, um, just to be mindful of any additional expenditures that could possibly be delayed at this time, until we do have some more cash flow coming in. Later on in the agenda, you'll see that there's a request for the dementia. That is to support the Artie Parker, uh, capital project funded by the province. At this time, our division has been funding that project, so we will be reimbursed three and a half million dollars, or three-point-two million dollars at the end of September, which will also help our cash flow. Um, the insurance claim is, um, proceeding. I was advised today that they have identified and awarded a contractor for the demolition. Uh, as soon as we receive a schedule and, uh, further information on that, I can proceed with, uh, further updates. It has taken a few weeks.
It has been awarded?
Pardon me? It was awarded, yes, um, to a company outside of Thompson. Um, that's all the info, they haven't provided a schedule or that at this time, but they were hoping to have it, uh, demolition started and completed prior to freeze-up.
Mm-hmm, temperatures falling.
Um, so we are proceeding as best we can within our constraints. We're ensuring, um, at this time, we haven't utilized any of our overdraft. Um, we have been able to maintain on the positive side for our bank balance to continue to meet payroll.
Any questions for the Secretary Treasurer? When you announced the fiscal austerity, did you tell Paul, or did he buy these toys before that?
That was before.
Oh, you're lucky.
And I mean, we're still proceeding with programming and what have you. It's just if there is some items that could be identified that could wait three or four weeks in ordering or what have you, it just buys us a little bit of time until we get some more of our financing in place.
Okay, moving to new business. Fifteen point one, Provincial Borwin Promissary, uh, Promissary Note. The School District of Mystery Lake will receive a long-term promissory note, L T P S O seven-four-one, dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of three million, two-hundred thousand dollars for the project support for the Artie Parker Collegiate Edition Renovation and Band Edition Project. Provincial project number M Y R D P M A two thousand twenty, uh, one. Recommendation we have in front of us is that the promissory note, L T P S O seven-four-one, dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of three million, two-hundred thousand dollars be approved. Can I have someone move that we accept the recommendation in front of us? Uh, Vice Chair, seconded by, uh, Trustee Young? Any comments or questions about this? Okay, all those in favor? Fifteen point two, Appointment of Auditor. In accordance with Sections forty-one, eight of the Public Schools Act and Administration Procedure five point zero-two-zero, the School Board shall appoint an auditor who shall carry out the duties of an auditor under the Act. The auditor will be appointed in September at the first regular meeting of the Board. The recommendation we have in front of us is that the Board appoint Baker Tilly, H M A L L P, as the district auditors for the school year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have someone move that we accept the recommendation in front of us? Uh, Trustee Humpy, seconded by, uh, Vice Chair, or by Trustee Young? Okay, Trustee Young on this one. Any discussion on the acceptance of this recommendation?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. How come we're not using a local auditor?
They are local, like, they, um, previously known as Canada, yeah.
Oh, they just changed their name.
Yeah.
So. All right. Yep, there you go.
Cool. Good question. Any other questions? All those in favor? Fifteen point three, Out-of-Country Travel. Uh, yeah. Out-of-Country Travel. Superintendent Henderson has been invited to attend the Wadu Ko Dading Ajibwe Language Institute in Wisconsin. Jackie Connell, Assistant Deputy Minister of Indigenous Excellence and Education Component with Manitoba Education, Early Childhood Learning, has extended the school visit invitation to Mystery Lake since our division is offering provincial bilingual programs. The recommendation we have in front of us is that Superintendent Henderson be approved to attend the Wadu Ko Dading, uh, Ajibwe Language Institute in Hayward, Wisconsin, for the week of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, to learn more about their school model and work in the area of indigenous languages immersion programming, with a travel budget in the amount of three thousand dollars. in the amount of three thousand dollars, being the responsibility of the division, that being us. Is there room for a trustee to come along with you? Was, was that in the request?
Um, I'm hoping to catch a ride with Jackie once I land in the States.
Oh, so, so there's no, did the piggyback?
Um, fitness requires.
No, it sounds interesting. Sounds interesting. Like to see what their partners off of the border are doing. So, uh, can I have someone move that we, uh, discuss the recommendation in front of us? Uh, Vice Chair, seconded by, uh, Trustee Nicole Saw? Does anybody have any discussions or questions for the superintendent? I need to request, uh, when we discussed this in the summer, we thought that maybe afterwards you could come and do a little presentation for us?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
For sure.
I think we're keen on that. That would be nice.
For sure, and it is a K to eight school that we're visiting.
Right.
Uh, very much.
So, so the Assistant Superintendent, uh, the Assistant Deputy Minister, it's because of our work with Cree immersion, is that correct?
Right, there's, um, two other, um, Assistant Superintendents that will be attending, one from One Pig One, Rob Real.
Okay.
And another, I believe she's from Seven Oaks, but they all provide, um, bilingual programming in indigenous languages. And I think we're at a time where we need to probably look at our program and freshen it up.
Hmm.
It's been a while since we did, we've had a review of our program.
And on the other end of things, it's staffing, that's always a challenge.
I was gonna say, has the staffing improved any since?
So, yeah, that'll be part of the conversation that needs to happen, so.
I know that that U C N itself is, 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 has money from the government as well, from the federal improved province to work on indigenous language training, especially around, like, teaching Cree language certificate, but comes down, sometimes the money is there, but the staffing is not.
You can't find the people?
Yeah, can't find the people.
And the, you find good folks and a lot of them, I mean, they're very sought after, so, I mean, they're, they're headhunted by lots of different organizations.
Absolutely, absolutely, so, it's definitely a question of capacity building. Yeah. We need the new generation to start learning Cree and, and, and be able to teach, that's for sure. Um, yeah, any questions about this before we move to the vote? Hearing none, all those in favor? Carrie. Fifteen point four, okay, this is my favorite card. Fifteen point four, Standing Committee Chairpersons. We have in front of us, uh, new school year, so we have to, uh, assign the, uh, the committee memberships. So we have before us fifteen point four point one, Education and Programming Committee Chairperson. Uh, first call for nominations for the Chair of Education and Programming.
I'll nominate Trustee Young.
Okay, we have a nomination from Trustee Young for Trustee Humby. Do you accept?
I do.
Second call for nominations. Hearing none. Third call for nominations. Hearing none. Uh, do we put that to the vote or we just accept it? Accept it. Okay, congratulations, Trustee Humby, you are now Chair of Education Programming. No take backs. Uh, fifteen point four point two, Finance Property Committee Chairperson. First call for nominations for Finance Property Committee Chairperson. I will nominate, okay, uh, Hank, who would you like to nominate? Uh, Trustee Young? I think the chair could trigger a nomination. Uh, Trustee Young, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Very generous of you. Second call for nominations. Hearing none. Third call for nominations. Okay, Trustee Young, uh, congratulations on Finance Property Committee Chairperson. Thirteen point four point three, Policy Committee Chairperson. First call for nominations for, uh, chairperson for the Policy Committee.
Vice Chair Tomuszy.
This is policy, right?
I thought, oh, okay, sorry, I had my head, my, it's off here.
That's okay.
Vice Chair Tomuszy, you would like to nominate Humby?
Uh, we do have correspondence from, uh, Trustee Sharker. Sharker, uh, Trustee Sharker wasn't able to be with us tonight, but he did inform us that, um, in the case of existing positions on the, on the committees, he would be willing to accept any, any position that he's been incumbent in. So, um, so Trustee Sharker will accept this. Second call for nominations for Policy Committee? Hearing none. Third call for Policy Committee? And hearing none, uh, Trustee Sharker in absentia. I told him, if he doesn't come in, we just put him where he, where he goes. Uh, fifteen point four point four, Public Relations Committee Chairperson. Uh, first call for nominations for Public Relations Committee Chairperson.
Vice Chair Tomuszy, you would like to nominate, uh?
Trustee Anderson?
Uh, Trustee Anderson, do you accept?
Yep.
Uh, second call for nominations? Hearing none. Third call for nominations? Hearing none. Uh, Trustee Anderson, congratulations on your chairpersonship for Public, uh, Relations Committee. Okay, fifteen point five, Standing Committee Members. Now, these are for members at large. Fifteen point five point one, Education and Programming Committee Members. Is there a nomination for, uh, the first member for the Education and Programming Committee? Yeah? Who would you like to nominate?
I nominate Trustee, uh, Nicole Saw.
Okay. Uh, Trustee Nicole Saw, do you accept?
Yes.
Any, anyone else want to step up?
I'll nominate, uh, Trustee, I think Warner Brown.
As a second member, uh, Trustee Warner Brown, do you accept?
Sure.
I guess that should be me taking one.
Unless there's a conflict, somebody wants to, yeah, okay, I will accept. Moving on to, uh, fifteen point five point two, Finance Property Committee Members. Can I have someone move, uh, the first, uh, of, of the two members for Finance Committee? Um, sure, go ahead.
So, Vice Chair Tomuszy, we'd like to nominate, uh, Trustee Anderson?
Trustee Anderson, do you accept?
Yep.
Second Committee Member? Can I have someone move for the second Committee Member?
Trustee Young will nominate, uh, Trustee Tomuszy.
Vice Chair, do you accept?
I do.
All right. Moving to fifteen point five point three, Policy Committee Members. Uh, can I have someone, uh, move for the first member, nominate for the first member of the, for the Policy Committee? Uh, Vice Chair?
Uh, Vice Chair Tomuszy, we'd like to, uh, nominate Hank. Sorry. Chairperson Warner Brown.
That's okay, I go by Hank, I respond to Hank also.
My apologies.
I, I will accept. Uh, moving second member of the Policy Committee.
I'll nominate, uh, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, do you accept?
Yes.
All right. Beautiful. Fifteen point five point four, Public Relations Committee Members. Can I have someone nominate for the first member, standing member of the P R Committee? Vice Chair?
Vice Chair Tomuszy, we'd like to nominate, uh, Trustee, Abby Humby.
Trustee Humby, do you accept?
I do.
Second member of the P R Committee.
I nominate Trustee Nicole Saw.
Trustee Nicole Saw, do you accept?
I do.
All right. Super, congratulations, everybody. Fifteen point six, no one wants to invite drama or, or contest? Make this too easy for the folks on camera?
Yeah, Paula.
Paula, you wanna go some, yeah, we have the ballots and, Paula, where, what do you want, can you wanna be? He's not paid enough, he says. Uh, fifteen point six, Board Negotiating Committee, we do have a collective agreement coming up with the steelworkers to be negotiated for the coming school year, so this is an important committee. Um, can I have someone move, uh, for the United Steelworkers Negotiating Chairperson? Uh, Vice Chair?
Vice Chair Tomuszy, we'd like to nominate, uh, Trustee Young?
Trustee Young, do you accept?
Yes.
Anyone else want to nominate or contest? Hearing none. Uh, fifteen point six point two for the first member, we need two members for the, uh, committee at large for the, uh, steelworkers negotiating. Can I have a nomination for the first position?
Nominate, uh, Trustee Nicole Saw.
Trustee Nicole Saw, do you accept?
Yes.
For the second position? Vice Chair?
Vice Chair Tomuszy, we'd like to nominate, uh, Trustee Sharker?
Okay. I have correspondence from Trustee Sharker that he will accept. So congratulations, Trustee Sharker, and Trustee Nicole Saw for your positions on the committee. Fifteen point seven, Board Representation to the Community? That's everybody, correct?
There's a few different committees.
Say again?
There's a few different committees under.
Oh, right, that's a heading. Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so let's do a school assignments first. School Assignments, uh, for Ecore Riverside, who volunteers for that? Trustee Humby and Vice Chair? How about Deerwood? Trustee, uh, Warner Brown? Okay, sounds good. Okay, good. Uh, Burnwood? Trustee Young? Juniper? Uh, Trustee Nicole Saw? Okay, great. Uh, Wopanook? Trustee Anderson, super. Westwood, um, Trustee Sharker has expressed, uh, interest in doing that and correspondence, so he will be, continue with Westwood. And Arti Parker will be everyone. All hands on deck for whenever. Good. Uh, Adolescent Health Education Committee, A H E C member. Can I have someone nominate for that? Vice Chair?
Vice Chair Tomuszy, we'd like to nominate, uh, Trustee Humby?
Trustee Humby, do you accept?
I do.
Does anybody nominate or contest? Okay, accepted. Fifteen point seven point three, Manitoba Games Host Society Executive. We had a presentation today, uh, with the Principal Harwood and his colleague, uh, can I sub, have someone nominate for that representative? Vice Chair?
Vice Chair Tomuszy, I nominate, uh, Trustee Anderson?
Trustee Anderson, do you accept?
Yep.
Anybody want to contest? Hearing none. Congratulations. Fifteen point eight, Liaison Committees. City School Board, all trustees, done? T T A, all trustees, done? See how easy this is? A U S W Labor Management Committee, done? Good. Ratification, nothing's being contested, so we have before us the recommendation that the results for tonight's reorganization of positions, phew, did you time that? How long did that take? Pretty good?
Very good.
Okay. Uh, for September twelfth, twenty twenty-four be ratified. Can I have someone so move? Uh, Trustee Humby, seconded by, uh, Trustee Nicole Saw? Any, any discussion, contest? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, Carrie. Okay, everybody, good work. We have a good, uh, slate of, of leaders to, to deal with the problems and the challenges from this coming year, and the rewards, of course. So thank you for your commitment and thank you for your dedication and thank you for your service. Uh, the fifteen point one, uh, Destruction of Ballots, we did not use any, so can you so save those for next time?
Absolutely.
Uh, fifteen point one one, Signing Authority. We have before us the recommendation that Chairperson Warner Brown, Vice Chairperson Tomuszy, Superintendent Bartlett, Superintendent Henderson, and Secretary Treasurer Knott be given signing authority effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, that's the school calendar day for tomorrow. Can I have someone so move that we accept this recommendation? Uh, Trustee Young, seconded by, uh, Trustee Humby? Anybody have comments or concerns? Okay, all those in favor? Carrie. Okay, Correspondence. Sixteen point one, I thought this might be a ten o'clocker, but actually. Uh, sixteen point one, Manitoba School Boards Association, we have before us the newsletter for September eleventh. Let me quickly peruse and see if there's anything. Fall Regional Meetings, we have Fall Regional Meetings, um, on virtual Saturday, October twenty-sixth. Upcoming M S B A P D sessions are there for your notice. Provincial Bargaining Milestone, August twenty-seventh, marking important milestone for school board teacher relations in Manitoba, as the historic first ever provincial teacher collective agreement was formally signed by the Manitoba School Boards Association and the Manitoba Teachers Society. So on behalf of the thirty-seven public English school boards, we recognize the hours of work invested by these three leaders in achieving agreement with M T S, and the three leaders are pictured here. Ooh, that's small. Patricia Weeb, uh, the co-chair with, um, Colleen Carswell and, uh, Justin Rempel on the M S B A side, and, uh, do a shout out to our local president for the T T A for the work that you've been doing with the T T A, and, uh, how many years now does that buy us? Another three years? It was retro for two years, right?
I said it was two.
Two years.
When I start bargaining in the spring.
The spring? That's the business.
In all honesty, that, that whole endeavor for the provincial bargaining, I mean, two years from its inception, that's pretty good.
I think the first one is, is, is the ground is broken.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
Like you're trying to kind of amalgamate thirty-seven collective agreements, so with, yeah, I, I didn't anticipate the speed in which that would happen, actually.
When I saw over the summer, I saw the news releases, I thought, surely.
Yeah, something happened, but.
Yeah.
But I was on the original.
So we worked out for two years, yeah?
Yeah. Super, super. Um, but does the, the, there is one last in the newsletter about the, the Truth and Reconciliation, so the Orange Shirt Day, of course, is, is September thirtieth. Are we doing something for that?
Um, the schools will be doing something, um, at the school level, and I'm pretty sure that a lot of teachers have signed up for the Truth and Reconciliation Week.
Okay.
That is put out by T R C M.
Okay.
Um, and I know that, um, M K O is going to be hosting something at the T R C C on the thirtieth.
Okay. Well, if, 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 if the schools are doing little, um, things in the auditorium or little, you know, let us know.
Okay.
And, uh, and we'll, we'll try to go there to support whenever we can, I think that would be a good gesture. Yeah, I think that, uh, we can all agree that, uh, Orange Shirt Day is, is a very important time for us up here in the North. Okay, great. Uh, sixteen point one point one, we have Resolutions and Nominations, oh, all right, from the school board. So, the M S B A has, uh, a call for nominations and resolutions for the coming, the coming, uh, conference. So, the resolutions commencing this fall, I'm just reading from the, uh, the communication, uh, because last year we kind of, we were late at the, late at the game. So it looks like the Association will be engaging in a slightly different process for resolutions. We are sending out advance notice of a soft deadline for October sixteenth. So looking at my calendar, that's one, two, three, four, roughly five weeks from now for you to submit your draft resolutions to our offices. So, um, that's two meetings, we have two meetings before that deadline. So if, if we want to start thinking on, if we want to submit a resolution for this coming convention, this is the time to start thinking about it. So I don't know, if, we, we submitted two resolutions late last year, but they were accepted by the executive, remember that? Um, and that was a success, so if we want to, you know, have two new ones maybe, or think about it, if anybody has a wish list on, something we can put in? I'm drawing a blank right now, but there's, I'm sure there's something we can put in for, for a resolution, maybe? Think about it, we have two, two meetings, okay? So maybe we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss, to see if we have some workshops, some ideas? Okay, time is on our side, so. I don't want to, I, la- last year, Michelle, you weren't here, but, but last year, we, we, we didn't make the fall deadline and then in January, these issues came up, and then, of course, we were late. Now, we were able to have the motions there ready for us in, in, in the spring, but we had to go a cir- a circuitous route to do that, so I'd like this time, if we do have something, to do it in a timely manner, yeah. Because I don't want to go back to the executive again, so. Uh, sixteen point one, uh, point two, Learning Opportunities. Uh, M S B A, we have learning opportunities there, you have some P D. Uh M S B A, we have learning opportunities there, you have some P D, everyone. Uh see if there's something of interest that you'd like to do. I believe. I don't think there's anything we have to action. Sixteen point two, the city of Thompson letter to education is there for uh your reading, perusal if you wish. I don't think we need to have any discussion on that. Uh sixteen point three. Been a long day. Sixteen point three, thank you to the retirees. I want to thank the the two retirees that we gave notice about today. Uh thank you for their contributions and in retro, all the retirements that happened over the summer, I think, to call out. We uh, we had a number of 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 great people who have gone on to retire or moved on to other employment. So um I don't know, and Jill, is there anybody we want to call in particular?
No, I mean, um if they were retiring in term, so from the from the teachers and they have to put it in by May thirty first. So we've, we would have, there was people, all the people that retired would have been acknowledged on that.
Alright, yeah.
They're, it's the E A's and support staff that have
Sure.
Just have to give two weeks' notice, basically, so those are the ones that you'll see coming in at this time of year.
Absolutely.
You have received a thank you card.
Oh, yes.
From retirees.
We do have a thank you card from a significant retiree. Thank you. It reads from Rob Fisher, thank you, Rob Fisher, thank you for a degenerous retirement gift and for it a hundred fifty dollars. Wow, deg- deg- generous. He says, I purchased patio lanterns to go with my new hot tub. Did he do that for spite, just to rub it in our face, or? So I'm gonna look at the back, oh, P S, the trustees are invited to come to my hot tub at any time. Thank you, Rob Fisher. Oh, he did not say that. But we can party crash, we can party crash, Paul. I want to go party crash Rob's hot tub. We know he has a hot tub. So thank you, Principal Fisher, for your and the work that you did, of course, with the province as well. Uh seventeen, uh this should be fast, we've not really had time to have any reports yet, but seventeen point one, I know the answer to this, policy committee. Do you have a report? No, none of the committees have met, so. Education Programming Committee, that will meet, Public Relations Committee have not met, Finance Property Committee have not met. Any other committees, has there been a committee, A H E C?
No.
No. Okay, okay. Um. Maybe on the topic of other committees, when do we want to give notice to the steelworkers to start discussion? Do they come to us or we go to them?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I just sit down and talk.
They come to us, eh?
Generally, that's kind of the what I experienced.
They'll come to you.
Okay. They serve us on their side. So there's no action. Uh so uh again, trustee Nicole Saw, thank you so much for, you know, for for doing this with us tonight and for 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 uh coming up to the plate and putting your name forward to the public for for election. Um typically, at this time, we do trustee comments and we just go around and we can give thanks or or do a shout out or or we can just if if somebody has an announcement for business.
Well, thanks to everybody that voted for me.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you to the constituency, absolutely. Um I think that you went by a significant margin, so congratulations, that's quite the accomplishment. Absolutely. Uh trustee Humby?
Um I'd just like to extend a warm welcome back to all students and staff to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. Um I also want to acknowledge that in light of the recent tragic fire at Westwood School um and the profound loss that our community has experienced, um I want to express immense gratitude to the dedicated staff that I know have worked tirelessly um following the fire and extend heartfelt thanks to the Thompson firefighters, EMS valet, volunteer firefighters and to the city of Thompson for their hard work and support during the event. Um I do appreciate the patience and understanding shown by the Westwood families as we navigate towards a new normal during this challenging time. I also want to remind residents that school zone speed limits are now in effect, so please exercise caution and prioritize safety when passing through our school zones. And I just want to wish everyone a successful and fulfilling school year and uh welcome to trustee Nicole Saw. Thank you for joining us.
No one cursed, no one cried, so it's a successful meeting. I joke, I was very. Uh trustee Young?
Uh trustee Humby pretty much said it all.
Yeah, she did a really good judgment.
Yeah.
Write that down.
No, I took some notes.
Yeah.
I liked to prethink.
It's notes. Vice chair?
Uh just to echo trustee Humby and welcome everyone back to a new school year.
Your little girl happy to be back?
No comment.
I hope he does.
Mom's not gonna comment.
Happy to be back, my teenager's not happy to be back, but that's what she tells us. She secretly, she is a little bit, there can't be a holiday forever. Uh trustee Anderson?
I just want to echo everything trustee Humby said and uh welcome everyone back.
Awesome, yeah, I echo everybody. I thank uh I thank my colleagues for for being here tonight with me and uh I look forward to the next ten months. Let's get some good work on.
Can I just make a comment?
No, that's trustee comments.
I just want to, I just want to welcome trustee Nicole Saw, right, is how you pronounce it? Um you know what, this will be a good experience. You have an opportunity as being a board of trustee to really impact uh kids' lives and it's, it can be very, very rewarding, so welcome.
Thank you, I look forward to it, you guys are awesome.
And I mean, public services is is a great thing, so we appreciate coming out and running and wanting to participate.
Absolutely. Excellent. Okay, uh second in camera, right? Oh, no, questions, question from the public, I missed the most important one, sorry.
I don't have a question or a comment.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to welcome trustee Nicole Saw, congratulations.
So do you two know each other?
Well, we met at the forum.
Okay.
Well, T T A hosted a forum last week.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So she knows you as as president?
Yeah.
Okay. She's not just a bystander?
No. I call her mom.
Good job.
She's one of those hecklers we try to get rid of, but she gets every every week.
She's already sad.
Ah, good, thank you, Captain, thank you so much for, you know, your work is is just is very important, so. I don't know if your members tell you that all the time, but we we appreciate you. No, no, I know. Uh item number twenty, second in camera section. The recommendation that the board moves in camera at eight sixteen. Can I have someone so move? Trustee Humby seconded. Vice chair, all those in favor? Okay. Can we take maybe a five minute? Get hydrated? Yeah.